Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the July 24th Planning Commission Public Hearing. Can I start with roll call?
Yavin Orto.
Kelly Cruz.
AJ Summers.
Rich Levy.
Brian Adams.
Utitor.
David Box.
Great. Before we get into any agenda items this evening, is anybody here for a public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, and there is none online, we will move to our agenda items. Our first agenda item this evening, excuse me, is PL 2025 0178 Rolling Stone Fairway Place. Is the applicant, do you think here? I don't see anybody online.
And I guess he's not online.
Okay, if he shows up, maybe we can come to him second, but if you want to start with the staff report.
Sure.
Hey, Brian, before we get started, my firm is on the team for this first agenda item, so I'm gonna step aside.
Great, thank you.
All right, so as you can see, PL 2025 0178 is a zone map amendment. This item is, if you recall, located there at 1170 Redwoods Drive was, is a result of the sort of land exchange acquisition between a residential lot and the golf course. Oh, hey Jeff, I was, I was just getting in, but would you like to go ahead and present first? That would be the typical order of presentation. You're muted.
So you'll want to make sure not to mute yourself.
There we go, I found the mute button.
Perfect.
Um, I guess the rezoning we're talking about here is for a piece of golf course property that our applicant is acquiring from Rolling Stone Golf Course to cover some improvements that he built on the golf course property. The golf course is signed in the plat. Our client, Richard Eddington, is signatory to the plat. And for that plat to happen without creating a split zoning situation, we are asking for the portion of the property that my client is picking up from the golf course be switched from golf course zoning basically to residential zoning.
Great, thank you very much. We'll let you know if you have any questions.
Great. Yeah, so as we were talking about, the, the current zoning of the residential lot is RN2 Residential Neighborhood 2. The golf course itself is zoned as residential estate 1. So they're both residential zonings. The problem comes in, as Jeff talked about, when they're absorbing a little piece of the golf course. Now we have a split zone lot, so obviously that zoning, or sorry, the plat has been approved. It is conditional, as we discussed last time, on the approval of this rezoning to make sure that we don't end up ultimately with a split zone lot. We look at the purpose and intent of the zone district requesting to be rezoned. Obviously, RN2 is intended for one-family, two-family residential. That is what's occurring there on the majority of the lot itself. We look at compatibility with surrounding zone districts. Obviously, all the neighbors are RN2. That's why we are recommending that zone district. The residential state 1 is also a residential zone district. When they do the change in size, as was assessed with the plat, the change in size doesn't take it outside of normal limits. It's not going to be an overly large lot, as was already assessed. But as we look at it now from a zoning perspective, it fits within the RN2 zone district. Obviously, the advantage of this outweighs any sort of disadvantages we could see. The key advantage being that we want to avoid split zone lots. I can't really work with those in the planning department. So we're looking to resolve that issue. This came about because of a changed condition since the last official zone map. We created that changed condition. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval to city council on this item.
Great, thank you Jeremy. Any questions from commissioners? I.
The only question I have on this is, how do we get in a position where, you know, we put a lot line down and it's, I guess, in the wrong place? Is that a fair statement?
No, it was a land acquisition.
So.
I shouldn't be answering.
Yeah, I mean, I can do my best to help. I believe what happened, and Jeff can also chime in if he has more context, is that the owner, through whatever means, whether he knew he was doing development on the golf course, or whether he didn't know, he did improvements to the golf course property. The golf course had all the right in the world to say, this is our property, thanks for making these nice improvements, and walk away. I think there have been lots of very agreeable neighborly conversations that say, okay, it's the hillside, buy your house, we don't really need it, we're willing to sell it to you for a price. And that's how we sort of arrived in this situation.
Thanks. Perfect. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And then, as always, Jeff, if you had anything else you felt that you wanted to add.
I don't think so. I think it's fairly simple deal. You're right, Jeremy, the owner built improvements on the golf course property. He then had us perform a survey, I think after he had those improvements in place for a while, and discovered that they were not on his property. And I think at that point, he decided that he would work with the golf course to try to acquire the property. The golf course is amenable, and that's why we are where we are.
Great, thanks Jeff. Or anything else from you, Jeremy?
No other comments, thanks.
Lastly, any other questions? Great, I'll close our public portion and come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
I don't see anything wrong with this. They're correcting an issue. You've got willing partners. I'd recommend approval of PL 2025 0178, the Rolling Stone Fairway Place. There are no conditions.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Pretty simple. Shouldn't be open space and recreation as part of a residential lot. Should be the same as all of the other ones around it.
Right.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, I will call for a vote. Aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Great, then that passes unanimously. Thanks for your time, Jeff.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Our next three agenda items are all for the same project site. Does it make sense to the applicant to do a presentation for all three, and then we'll make individual votes? Or would the applicant like to see three individual presentations? Want to make sure that you're up for it. I think I have.
We would just like to do one presentation for all three applications.
That's terrific.
Okay.
Oh, I'll read them in real quick, sorry. PL 2025 0129 Strings in the Mountains Easement Vacation. It's agenda item number two. Agenda item number three is PL 2024 0183 Strings in the Mountains Zone Map Amendment. And agenda item number four is PL 2024 0185 Strings in the Mountains Preliminary Plat. So when the applicant is ready for a presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Planning Commission. Walter McGill, Four Points Surveying and Engineering, here on behalf of Strings in the Mountains. Strings in the Mountains executives are here with me tonight in the back, Alisa and Gardner, as well as the project architect, Bill Ragnish. Some of you may know, we tabled the preliminary plat and the zoning amendment previously. And the easement vacation, we went back and reworked. So what we have here, and brought us to this present point, is with the ticket booth, as well as a portion of the extension of the restroom facility, were built over the property line. Probably back to 2006, I think that's in, there might be 2009. And so to remedy that, the other property it was built into has an open space easement on it. Now, that property was purchased by Strings in the Mountains from the Golden Triangle. It still has an open space easement over it, and it is zoned OR for open space recreation. So we looked to, previously we had shown kind of a bigger plan, a bigger ask, and working with staff and moving this forward for a future project at the string site for a vestibule. We have what we have before you tonight, which is an easement vacation. We're about five foot outside the foundation of these two structures. So Kelly, could you put up the site plan, please? And the site plan shows in purple these structures, kind of with a north-south line, and just going around the existing foundations. So I think we have about 1,600 square feet of easement vacation that we're asking for. And if we can get the easement vacated from open space, then we can move on with the next two steps. And that is, first, as similar to the last project that was up, to get the same zoning on both parcels. So we would rezone the vacated easement area to CC zoning. And then we would merge that through a preliminary plat and create a new preliminary plat that includes this 0.03 of an acre. So it's a net 2.5% of that open space easement and that open space parcel. The site plan doesn't include the vestibule, because that's not what's being brought up right now. So it really is a kind of a revised clarification plan, cleanup plan, to correct the oversight of the building being constructed across the property line. And then to remedy that, get everything zoned the correct way. Thank you, Kelly. I'll put my glasses on to see that. Right, so I think I've got, oh, it's 0.03 of an acre. That is the restroom facility on the north, little piece of the ticket booth on the south. Four, or five feet, I think, off the foundation, a little bit more off the structure here. So that's what we have. It still remains a separate parcel. And we're replating that separate parcel as well in the preliminary plat. And as I said, the reduction is from 1.2 acres to 1.17 acres. And we ask for your support for the easement vacation here for any more questions. And that's going to be the same line that's used in both the zoning amendment as well as the preliminary plat. We'll do a final plat at a future application. If you have any questions, myself or the project team can come back up and answer them. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. And Kelly, do you have a staff report for us as well?
I do. Kelly Douglas, Senior Planner, good evening. I'm here to present three interrelated applications. First, we have the easement vacation. This is a request to vacate 1,281 square feet. A square foot portion of the permanent open space easement. For context, you have previously, Planning Commission, have previously heard this request at that time under a different application for the easement vacation. It was to vacate the entire 1.2 open space easement parcel. This scope is reduced. And it just addresses the building encroachment plus the setbacks required from that building. So that encroachment does, those buildings will conform with CC standards. And I'd just like to note that, you know, this reduction in the scope of the proposal of the easement vacation is in response to feedback. And I just want to take a moment to thank Strings for working with staff on this. So thank you. For the zone map amendment piece, this is a request to rezone that same 1,281 square foot portion from open space and recreation to community commercial in order to be integrated into that parcel. And then finally, there's a preliminary plat for a two-lot subdivision, and that's to incorporate that land into the lot, kind of make that happen. So these three applications are being processed concurrently and are contingent on one another. So I'll cover each one and give a little color to each, but it's a little bit of a rerun from a previous hearing, so some of it will be familiar. Like I said, the easement vacation is for that smaller part. This is to resolve an existing encroachment, building encroachment, incorporate it into the adjacent parcel. Staff is recommending approval, and we find that it meets the criteria for approval of an easement vacation. For the zone map amendment, like I was saying, it's to incorporate that vacated portion, sorry. It's to rezone that vacated portion, that small, from OR to CC. And we support that rezoning based on consistent findings, the criteria for approval. And then finally, the preliminary plat 2 is a two-lot subdivision. And again, these are logical lot boundaries. It supports the existing uses, retains the public open space, so it's really meeting the needs of the applicant. Resolve that building encroachment and the needs of the city to maintain that easement and its function. So we are recommending approval on that front over as well. So in conclusion, the reduced request, it provides a focused solution to the building encroachment issue identified, while still preserving the intent and function of the remaining open space. We have not received any public comment and support or opposition to the proposal. And as I mentioned, we're recommending approval of all three applications and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I'm just, for recollections purposes, Kelly. When this first came to us, it was a much larger change. It involved the area not associated with the building that is now we're talking about. It was more than that. So this is strictly associated with the fact you built something on an easement, a permanent easement, I believe, that is now built. There's a structure there. And so we're trying to remedy that.
Correct. Yes, you understand correctly. There was previously a request to vacate the entire easement.
Right.
The extensive, the whole lot, because they match. With, you know, some history is that there was a couple of development plans that were approved. They didn't reflect that lot line. So that just is what it is. We just know that from looking at the files. But the building does exist where it exists, and it came to light with that larger proposal that you saw last time, that there was this encroachment issue. So that needed to be resolved, and this is, this is the resolution.
The resolution.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A question for the applicant. So when was this built and why was it not known when built? The building over the easement line. That seems like a really required item when you build a new building. And invest in it.
Property line. It was constructed over. I think staff looked into that question and found on the site plan that they were provided, it didn't have the property line shown. And then it was an oversight at the building department, at the planning department as well.
Okay.
So.
What year was that, Walter?
Didn't pull it out of the. 2010 on the restroom and 2003 on the ticket office.
Okay, thanks.
So the larger facility was 2010.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. And it's more of a procedural question. If we were to approve the zone map amendment, we would essentially be putting community commercial and open space on this one parcel. Correct? Two different zones in one piece of land?
Uh, no, that's the preliminary, the zone map amendment rezones those small portions, those two triangles that amount to the 1,281 square feet. And then the preliminary plat moves those two triangles from OR. The rezoning changes the zone district, and then the preliminary plat incorporates them into the, what is now the CC parcel.
But.
So it puts a property line there, so there's two different property lines.
Yeah, there's a property line between them, but we haven't moved a property line yet because the plat hasn't been approved.
That's the preliminary plat piece.
Sure.
So are you asking if, sorry, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, can we approve the zone map amendment without approving the preliminary plat?
No, I don't think so. You have to be the same zoning in order.
Yeah, so the effective date, the effective language of the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry. The plat will include a condition, should include a condition of approval, that states that the rezone and the easement vacation have to take effect first. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but if.
I mean, those really have to be approved and effective before the preliminary plat can be approved.
Yeah, but how can we approve the zone map amendment and put two different zones on one piece of property that hasn't been replatted yet?
Because all of the effective dates of all three of those decisions will come together, like they're all reliant on each other, so your motion to approve the zone map amendment doesn't actually change the zoning. The zoning doesn't change until that final plat is recorded.
Okay.
So all three of those decisions are sort of interrelated and reliant on each other. And will become effective at final plat recording.
Great, thank you.
I'd just add that, yeah, there's conditions of approval for each that tie that together, and that will be, when we go to city council, will be part of the ordinance. and that will be, when we go to city council, will be part of the ordinance effective language.
And that leads me to my only question, which is, I see it in condition number two on the preliminary plat is, I think, very exactly what you're talking about. I understand that. But the zone map amendment doesn't have any conditions? And was that, is that a problem into what I otherwise understand from both of you that is how they're contingent on each other, but is that a requirement for it to be successful, that there's a condition of approval in there?
The, the zone map amendment will have effective, yeah, maybe, maybe that's a flaw, that it's missing a condition there.
I'm glad you got to that a little better than I did.
But yeah, in the end, the effective language of the ordinance, for the plat, for the zone map amendment, it actually, it won't be a condition. It will be how the ordinance goes into effect. So yeah, I think you're right. That should have a condition to make that clear. That's what it should include, but that is what will happen.
Sure. Because another way, I guess, to ask that is, in practice, if it's being covered anyway, then maybe we don't need the condition. And I think that's maybe what you just said. In practice, the ordinance is taking care of that anyway, so a missing condition is moot.
I think the other thing also is there's a, there is a condition on the easement vacation.
Yeah.
That that takes effect. So I think it, perhaps that's missing. We can evaluate that before we go to city council, but I hope that answers your question and the way it will, if you, you know, if it is approved.
Yeah.
Go into effect.
Other questions, yeah?
A question. Kelly, there's language in the CDC about lot lines being more or less straight. Is this, do you know the intention, why that's there, and whether having this crazy lot line could potentially cause any problems that that language is trying to solve?
The standard you're referring to, it talks about lots being generally rectangular, except it allows the director to make findings based on kind of the context of the lot. We also have other lot shape standards that all kind of work together. So in this case, all the angles, you've seen some variances related to that. They meet our standards. And the lot shape, although not perfectly rectangular, it does meet those, the findings that the director is allowed to make related to the presence of easements built, like construct sidewalks, like those sort of things. So overall, we find that, you know, it's in response to the existing conditions. It is the existing condition. This is, again, it's been dramatically reduced, the scope of the request to just address this issue that's come to light. So all those things together, no, no negative impacts anticipated from the shape of the lot.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I don't see any online either. So Walter, I'll come to you first. Is there any final applicant response? Okay. Or from you, Kelly?
I just wanted to, again, say thank you for working with staff to address this issue that's come up. We appreciate that.
Great. And any final questions? I'll close our public portion for all three agenda items, and I am open. Do we want to discuss all three at the same time and make a motion on them individually? Is that clean enough for everyone? Okay, great. So we'll do, we'll do it just like that?
I mean, I'll just, I'll just say that I'm supportive of the project. It's a dramatic reduction from the original request that we had. I don't know when it was. It was a while ago. You know, the 1,280 square feet to correct the fact that there's construction on an easement, I think, you know, the question was asked, how do you, how do you construct over that easement in the first place? That's a good question, but I don't know. A lot of things happen. Zoning change is for compatibility, and the plaque condition does require the zone map approval. And I'm not sure that we need a condition added since these are all, these would all be taking place at the same time. So, I mean, I'll, given that, I don't know how you want to approach each one individually or we just have our discussion and then talk about them individually?
Let's do that. Let's just do discussion first.
Yeah.
That would be really helpful. And I'll just jump in real quick, if that's okay, and say that the other way that I look at it, especially with something like this, where something happened in error, don't even matter whose error it is, but, okay, what if that hadn't happened? And what if just today they were proposing the bathrooms or the ticket office right here? Would I be able to support lines and the location as they are? And looking at it that way as well, not only kind of helps me inform the criteria of approval for each one, but also just understanding, is this, you know, is this intent to clean up an error or is it because this is actually okay? And I think based on the relationship of the existing building to the lot line and the open space and how the access, drive, and plaza behave, where they put the bathrooms is kind of the spot where they should have, and I would have been able to approve this even if it hadn't been constructed yet, kind of a thing. So then I can take all that off of there and at that point, just say what Lou already said, so. Any other discussion?
I think I, I mean, I'm supportive, just to get that out there. I would have liked to see something in between, like with some clean lot lines, because they can create a strange situation when it's super jagged like this. And I would have liked to see them a little bit cleaner, but I don't know what the conversation was and if that wasn't even an option. But somebody someday, when this building no longer exists, is going to be like, what on earth was this? Why did this happen this way? And I don't think that that necessarily had to happen that way, but I also wasn't part of everything, so I'm supportive. I just think it's weird.
Any other discussion? Yeah, Rich?
I kind of disagree. I mean, I support the project. For me, I don't know if I would have approved if this was coming to us originally to give up any amount of open space so they can build it, you know, where they want to. But for me, I think both staff and previous planning commissions, which I may have been a part of at the time, are complicit in allowing this error to have occurred. This project would have come before us. So a lot of us missed, missed a key component of this original development proposal. And for me, that would be the justification for allowing it. I mean, it is minor, but I would have thought twice or three times about it if this was the raw proposal to go ahead and build onto dedicated permanent open space. But I'm okay, the circumstances are a lot different than that. And so this is a fine way to correct the situation.
Yeah? Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to add to that, because I do agree with Rich, that if this was a fresh proposal, I don't know if I would be so supportive of losing open space for any situation, but the applicant came back and did what we asked them to do and not try to vacate all of the open space, turn the whole lot into community commercial. You know, that's what we asked for. They came back with it. The lot line is maybe a little silly, but, you know, I can see what it is. It works for me. I'm supportive of this.
Yeah, I think, I actually look back, Brian, as you did. I think that's a great way to think about it. And as AJ, as you said, open space is something precious. We don't want to lose it. But this is probably the right reason too, and it's a small amount and leaves quite a bit, so I support it.
Yeah, I think this is a substantial change from the original ask, and like AJ said, they worked on it, slimmed it down, and really are cleaning things up, so I'm supportive.
We can continue to discuss if we want to, but definitely if somebody wants to make a motion, we would want to start with agenda item two's motion with the easement vacation, if somebody were to make one.
I'll move to approve PL 2025-0129 with the two conditions of approval listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion on that? I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
All right, so that passes unanimously. Anybody want to make a motion on agenda item number three, the zone map amendment?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve PL 2025-0183 without conditions as shown.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously as well. And agenda item number four, then, the preliminary plat. Does anyone make a motion?
Sure. A motion to approve PL 2024-0185, subject to the two conditions as described in the staff report.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Final discussion on this? I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously as well. Thanks very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number five this evening. This is PL 2024-0285 Nordic Lodge Hotel. Is the applicant here for presentation?
Good evening. I'm Corey Manning, Director of Development for Summit Hotel Properties, representing Nordic Lodge on planning application, PL 2024-0285. Kelly, could you pull up the site plan for me? Kind of wanted to go through the summary of how the property was purchased. When we purchased the property, it was known to be 47 units. Now that's, it's come, come to light that one of the units wasn't properly permitted. There was a code complaint, and code enforcement went through the process of evaluating the unit 130, which is in building F, which is the small unit just north of the alley on the east side. So our proposal with Kelly's help, thank you for your assistance and guidance on the application, would be to decommission room 130, reducing our hotel count to 45 rooms. And there's an apartment in building B, that's the middle, middle building, that would be turned into a workforce housing apartment. And total parking right now is 43 spaces. There's room to add a space north of building C, so we would have a total of 44 spaces, deficient of one required space, which we are requesting a variance to operate the property with one deficient parking space. And if pay in lieu of parking is an option to consider, or a long-term lease with a neighboring property, we would consider that as well.
Thank you very much. We'll let you know if we have questions. And Kelly, do you have a staff report as well?
Indeed, I do. Okay, Kelly Douglas, again, this application is a development plan, major variance and conditional use. The property, the Nordic Lodge, that's how we all know it. It's located on Lincoln and 11th, right next door. The front lots, or the lots that are fronting on Lincoln, rather, those are zone CO, and the lots that are north of the alley are CK2, it's commercial O2. So as background, there was a 2024 code enforcement case that the applicant mentioned, and that brought to light that there were several units that may lack their required approvals. So in order to kind of figure this out, we have to look back at our, at our files. And in this case, the most recent applicable approved plan, MD 0010, it allowed 40 hotel rooms, one employee unit, and 46 parking spaces. However, not, that was a phased development, and not all the phases of that development came to fruition. Like building F, for example, that's, that's where room 130 is that precipitated the code enforcement case. That was supposed to be demolished as part of that 2000 plan, but instead now it contains several lodging units. So like, that's an example of how the plan has not completely come to fruition. In addition, over time, incremental and undocumented changes under different ownership have caused the site to drift from compliance with any prior approval. An example of that would be unapproved conversions of residential, commercial, storage space into hotel rooms. So that would be hotel room 101, 102, 201, 202, 211. So as a result, the site is not clearly legally non-conforming. It's kind of in the gray area, if you will. It's in between. It's not conforming with anything. So some aspects of the site conform to previous approvals, such as the extent of the paved parking area or the landscape islands. Those have always been that way for a very long time. While other aspects, such as the number of painted striped spaces or the number of hotel rooms, for example, those don't match previous plans. So this is a complicating factor of the review. So when we have this type of situation, we apply standards in the most reasonable way we can. We always want to be reasonable. So in this case, we're focusing on the expansion of the use and how the CDC can best be met all of these things considered. So with this application, the applicant is seeking to formulate, formalize a configuration of 45 hotel rooms, one workforce unit, that's number 230, room 230, and decommission room 130, which again is the one that kind of precipitated where we are now. So regarding process, a conditional use is required for the expanded hotel use, because I mentioned before, there's some areas that were commercial or they were in office and now they're hotel rooms, so that's an expansion of the hotel use. And then there's the workforce unit. This unit was previously approved as an employee unit. However, you see it here as part of the conditional use request because, for two reasons. The reason, the reason that the workforce unit use is important is because there's a parking waiver associated with that, right? So that's, that's an important thing to note. And then the reason you see it as a conditional use, before I move on from that point, that would be, that's new, is what I'm trying to say. Although it was an employee unit, in order for it to be a workforce unit and be eligible for the benefit of calling it that and it being that, it has to be reviewed as that because it has never gone through that review. So just, you know, I want to give you these details. We'll have to hold all of this in our minds at the same time. It's part of what makes this kind of a, admittedly a complicated one. And in addition, that workforce unit, it exceeds the 1,000 square foot maximum in U Standard 301B5E. So that's why you see it as part of the conditional use request. You see that all the time. U Standard needs to be modified, becomes a conditional use. So that's the use expansion. We're talking about hotel and workforce unit. For the major variance piece, this is requested for a one-space parking deficit. So I want to walk you through the parking calculation now. The calculation is 45 spaces for 45 hotel rooms, so, but the hotel standard is one space per hotel room, plus one space for the workforce unit. So that's a total of 46. That's our subtotal. Then we subtract one space. We do that because one space is waived per the workforce unit incentive in table 300-1. There's one workforce unit proposed, so there's one space waived. It's up to two. If we were to waive two, we'd be essentially taking a parking space away from the hotel, which isn't the way the incentives supposed to work. So I hope that that's clear, how that waiver applies. It's one unit, one space. If three, if three workforce units were proposed, two spaces could be waived from that three. Does that, hopefully that tracks. Okay. We can come back to that if you have questions about it. But so what that means is that we have 46 required, and then we subtract one for that waiver, and that makes a total of 45 parking spaces required for this configuration. There are 44 spaces proposed. There's 43 existing, as applicant mentioned in their presentation. There is room along the alley for one additional parallel space. The applicant's narrative mentions an alternative parking plan. To my knowledge, that hasn't, we haven't received anything along those lines to review, so I can't speak to that. Just want to note that. And then for the development plan piece, this is procedurally required because a major variance has to accompany a development plan. That's the way the development plan section of the CDC reads, like the procedures, how they accompany each other. So no development is proposed, just to be clear. All of these processes are in an effort to address the expanded use and the enforcement issue. So that's, that's how we got to that application type. So for staff's analysis and recommendation, the key question is whether the uses and the site intensity are appropriate, given the parking constraints and limited supporting infrastructure. This has been, excuse me, this has been existing a long time, the Nordic Lodge, since before... The Nordic Lodge since before 1975. Maybe you can speak to that more, but it's been a very long time. And truth be told, it hasn't changed a ton from the outside. It's the inside that's changed over time. So anyway, back to that key question. So staff supports lodging, and we support workforce units in downtown and at this location specifically. That's outlined robustly in the community plan and the downtown plan. However, these uses have to be supported by infrastructure. Parking is a key issue, and it's the basis for staff's recommendation of denial in this case. As always, though, planning commission is free to make its own findings. Staff and the applicant, we provide analysis for your consideration, but the recommendation is ultimately yours to make. So to assist you with that, you'll notice I've included a recommended motion based on staff's analysis as well as an alternative approval motion with appropriate conditions of approval, if that's the way, you know, your findings take you. So just, you know, keep that in mind. As for the options available to resolve the situation, staff and applicant have been working together for a number of months, trying to come forward with a proposal that we can all live with and support. Options available include decommissioning additional hotel rooms, deed restricting an additional workforce unit, or a fee in lieu of our fee schedule states $27,550. These are all options that have been discussed over the past year, I believe, at various DRT meetings and through written comments. So those options are all still available. Staff's recommendation is based on the materials we've received to date. Regarding public comment, we've received one written comment, and that was received earlier this week and was regarding vehicles parking across the sidewalk on Lincoln. Overall, staff's recommendation, again, is denial in this case, and that's based really on the parking variance. We were not able to make findings, consistent findings. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I read a, you indicated there was an alternative parking plan that was suggested but is not available.
That's correct.
That might be a question for, it's your question.
No, I mean, she was the person that indicated that they didn't have it. So maybe that's for the applicant. Why isn't there an alternative plan?
There was early on submitted with parking spaces for motorcycles. So there's four motorcycle parking spaces and 44 car spaces. 43 car spaces.
Can you say that again? I didn't understand that.
The alternate plan included motorcycle parking. So one car location by building F was removed, and then motorcycles could pass through that area to park in the existing pavement, just to the north of building F.
Okay.
Kelly, just to clarify, you said if they would change the purpose of one hotel room to workforce housing, that would reduce the number of hotel rooms to 44. You add two parking spaces for workforce, but then you could reduce two?
Correct.
And they would be in conformity?
Correct.
Thank you.
But then that hotel room would also then need building permit and work to turn it into, like, that wouldn't be the end of the story. There would be more to it. Would need a kitchen and...
They have one.
Oh, got it.
There's one with a full kitchen. Any additional questions?
Again, just, this for Kelly, and it's part of my issues with recollection. I remember the Nordic Lodge was present when the discussion about City Hall and the parking, the net parking being removed. And I got a sense from that conversation that that parking lot, where that was the net parking that was removed when City Hall was rebuilt, was being used by the Nordic Lodge. I don't know if that's an accurate assessment, but that's my recollection.
Well, it was a public parking lot, so, you know, sure, anybody could have been using it. I'm sure the Conoco next door maybe had some opinions about removal of that parking lot as well. But, you know, it's a public surface lot. It was not a part of a calculation to serve any particular use. It was just on its own.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Was there any discussion, like, this one's complicated for me, so I'm not trying to open up cans of worms, but was there any discussion about, my program just crashed, the north section, the CK2 section of the lot, and the parking spaces that are existing within the right-of-way? There's like a portion of two spaces that are kind of encroaching in the alleyway, if that makes sense? Is that something that could be righted with this application? Or is that not something that is covered by this? I'm just surprised it's not part of any of the discussion.
Well, again, it's kind of going back to the, what I was mentioning to begin with, is that this, these are paint lines that have moved around over time. The extents of the parking lot, the paved area, has not changed. Staff is responding to the existing condition. Yeah, like I was saying, there's no development proposed. These spots are existing there at the time. We are trying to be reasonable in the application of the standards. So again, focusing on the expansion of the use. The, I think, and to us, the issue is the math of the spots. Because again, nothing is being proposed, with the exception of one spot that is to be striped. And that's kind of a, that's kind of 11th hour ad, just a couple of weeks ago. You know, we're not looking at it from that exact perspective. We are trying to reasonably apply the standards.
Any other questions?
This is a question for the applicant. If there were a restriping plan that A, got all of your spots into your lot and out of the right-of-way, and got you to the number of spaces that you need for this application, is that something, would you be open to restriping your lot to actually comply with the number of spaces you're required to have?
If it was possible to do that, yes.
Think it is.
Right now, but when you're saying the right-of-way, the alley, there's two spaces in the north part that are parallel to the alley, but they're not in the alley.
On the plans, they're shown in the alley. The southernmost stripe is shown in the alley. But maybe they're not, but that's what's shown on the plans.
We would be willing to, if you can do compact parking, there's a lot of big cars over there because of where we are and things like that, but yeah, we'd be open to that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so I, this is for the applicant. Sorry, don't sit down. So I'd mentioned earlier and asked staff around if you would change usage for one of the rooms. My understanding and looking at your website is there is another full room that has two bedrooms, a kitchen, and maybe over the square footage, just like the one is. But in the situation where we're trying to find all the workforce housing we can in the city so we can keep our workforce here, is that something that the owner would consider? Conversion.
Yeah, we discussed that when I was working with Kelly. And we want to maximize the hotel rooms, obviously, because that's what the investment was in hotel rooms. But I don't think that we would be opposed to working with you on that.
Thank you. Other questions?
Kelly also mentioned, sorry, would you come back up? Kelly also mentioned the option of deed restricting, which I think also reduces your parking need if you deed something as affordable housing. It reduces a unit to one space. Can you confirm that?
I'm sorry, you...
If you deed one of the, like, a multifamily unit as affordably, as affordable housing, that reduces that's, the parking requirement for that unit to one space. I think it's a footnote in the...
It is. I don't think that that actually, like, represents an advantage to the applicant in this circumstance. The parking requirement is already one space per a unit, for a workforce unit. The workforce deed restriction is a little more flexible. It's based on residency or AMI. Affordable housing is based on AMI. The workforce housing use, or sorry, workforce unit use would represent a greater advantage to the applicant as the waiver. The affordable housing footnote that you're referring to, this is now kind of an aside, but that's more advantageous to a multiple-family residential use, where one unit is 1.5 spaces. So that reduces their parking requirement. So in this case, for this applicant, the workforce unit use represents a greater incentive.
I think I'm asking because there is still the question of whether workforce housing, whether a large workforce housing unit is approvable, which is part of the larger conversation as well. So just thinking of other avenues. So the question was, are you open to that as a possibility?
We didn't explore that. Like she said, it was...
Not part of the conversation.
If the unit's too big, we always need storage. We could do linen storage up there and close it off to the, to reduce it down to the 1,000 square feet we needed to.
This may be a procedural question. And maybe it's for both the applicant and staff. So I'll ask Kelly first. Given additional information and time, do you believe that we can come to some alternative to what is being proposed tonight?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the last part. I heard alternative?
Given additional information and time, would it be possible to come to an alternative, an acceptable alternative to staff?
I mean, staff has presented the same options for quite a while.
Okay.
And we are reacting to what we receive. I view my job as to make the options available known, and then we proceed based on the applicant's direction. In this case, this applicant has come with this proposal.
Okay.
There's fee in lieu. They can decommission a hotel room. It can just sit vacant. Lower the parking requirement. I understand that's not necessarily a smart financial decision, but that is an option to resolve this issue. Or, you know, there could be an additional workforce unit. But in the end, there's 44 parking spaces. And from staff's perspective, there's three different ways that that number can work, and we are happy to resolve it in any of those three ways. But barring, you know, the applicant agreeing to one of those and submitting documents that support those, that option...
Okay, I'll ask the applicant then, if I could, the same question. Are you willing to, do you see working with staff, extending this, not having a vote tonight, and seeing if you can work that out, do you think it's going to come to a different conclusion?
Like Kelly said, we've been down several options, and the final one is the one that works best for operating the property and the value of the investment. And I think that's why we proposed this final one. We are in the process of working on a new development, which doesn't mean anything about this one, but to expand the property, and we've been in the planning office and worked with an architect on that. So anything decided on is likely going to be temporary.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, you mentioned that the described motorcycle parking, alternative parking solution you've never seen to date?
Oh, we have reviewed that proposal, and to be honest, we rejected it. It did not represent an improvement. It took one required parking space out of commission and added four parking spaces for motorcycles, which do not amount to anything toward the requirement.
In other words, there's nothing in our CDC that says this many motorcycle parking spaces equals this many parking spaces?
Correct. It actually reduced the number of required, like, parking spaces that would meet our off-street parking standards. So it represented a degradation from the current condition. So staff rejected that proposal in favor of, you know, the existing condition, which was one more space than that plan. Which, of course, the applicant is still entitled to bring forward.
Yeah.
However, you know, we've received these updated materials that are in your packet in that meantime. Because again, like, we are just moving forward with the applicant's proposal. That's the proposal we've landed on. Whether or not the narrative clearly speaks to that kind of series of events, again, like, not... The applicant is entitled to write what they want to write in their narrative, and whether it reflects that chain of events, like, again, those are all, you know, right or wrong or indifferent. Like, these are the materials we have to work with.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
And then, no, that's terrific. And so then, if I could ask you, when that alternative parking solution was rejected by staff, did you have a conversation with staff, or did you think internally with your architect about, or I'm not sure who wrote the narrative, you just had mentioned architect, but... Oh, you wrote it. Did you consider including narrative response to the conditions for the variance that you knew that staff was proposing so that we would be able to review the applicant's reasoning for the variance?
Well, after discussing with Kelly or staff that the motorcycle parking did count for the CDC, that we removed it and went for our best guess with vehicle parking.
Right, but didn't add narrative at that point to...
Not in the final...
Respond to the variance.
Right, it was not added.
Okay, I guess I don't have a follow-up question for that at the moment. Thank you. Any other questions? No other questions? We don't have much in the sense of public, so we'll skip public comment. Did you want to give us any final feedback before we move forward?
Only thing I was gonna use for final feedback is the potential of another major development plan and application coming through in the near future at the Nordic Lodge.
Thank you. Kelly, any final feedback from you?
I would just like to acknowledge that this is difficult. I think it's been difficult for the applicant and for me, you know, like, it's a long history to kind of unpack, to figure out how these things happened. There's been a change in ownership that I think, although doesn't relieve any requirements, it is the fact of the matter. I appreciate this applicant for continuing to work with us. And again, just acknowledge that it's a, it's a use we support in a location where we support it under circumstances that we can't really support. So it's admittedly a tough one. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask a couple of final questions real quick before I forget them. So along those lines, and kind of as presented that you're talking about, when you were doing your staff analysis and got through to the variance portion, right, and your reasonings for inconsistent, they're pulled up. Without the applicant writing any kind of narrative justification for why they think that their site plan and lack of parking spaces meets either unnecessary hardship or an acceptable alternative, if I'm paraphrasing properly, you're saying that you tried to look at it through both of those lenses and could not find your own way to support that? Or did you, was staff's position, we are only really trying to react to their narrative, which didn't have anything, therefore we don't have anything? Two different ways. And I'm curious, kind of, did you not even see a path forward, right? Is kind of the crux of my question.
Well, I pause because that's not exactly the easiest question to answer.
It's not. It's not at all.
And I say that because we've been working on this together for quite a while. So there's been a lot of back and forth. It wasn't just this applicant walked in with a narrative and we said, nope, and then scheduled for hearing. We have looked at this a lot of different ways. And absent a proposal, absent, absent some kind of acceptable alternative, some kind of, I mean, we can't find a hardship because we've found that this expansion of use has happened illegally. So that's kind of one thing. So that rules out the hardship. How we got here does matter. This use has expanded, yet the parking has not. So we can't call that a hardship. And then in terms of an acceptable alternative, there hasn't been one to date. And we've, again, like we've tried to look at this a number of ways. We've tried to, I mean, yeah, we've, we've gone through a number of iterations with this project. We've evaluated 47 hotel rooms with a three-space parking variance. That was, when this application was tabled, that was the proposal that was coming to you. And that proposal was revised, so we tabled. You'll recall that a few hearings ago. And this is the hearing. And that brought the variance down to one space, which although is positive movement, the same, the same issue remains. There's no, there's not an, there's not an alternative to one space that the use requires. There's options for how to address that. Again, one of them, I guess I misspoke earlier. The fourth option is a variance, but that's not one staff can support based on these findings. So applicants pursued this path. The alternative, it just, it hasn't landed with us. We haven't been able to see what the alternative is and how it would work to say that it is consistent with one of those three acceptable alternatives. So that's very long-winded.
No, I get it.
Answer to your question. But my point in being kind of long-winded is that it has been iterative. And we have really tried to look at this from a number of angles to come to some solution. The same options are on the table. This is the one we're reviewing, and we just aren't able to get there on the, particularly the variance findings. You know, parking is a major, is a major thing, particularly in this, you know, sensitive downtown context where everybody has to share.
Then my, my question, related question is, as Kelly speaks about iterative, and you've been looking at this for a while. I have not, nor have I taken a scale to your site plan. So bear with me. The area in the middle of the parking, how am I going to describe that? You probably already know what I'm talking about. You've got that planter, and there's kind of like some, some weird configuration going on there, very Tetris-shaped, in my opinion. Is there a different Tetris configuration that could have bought another space if the planter wasn't there? Looking at angled parking on one side and parallel parking on the other? Or I don't even know what, because again, I, first of all, I'm not supposed to. But second of all, I haven't looked at it in a dimensional format. But was there any way to find any extra spaces through our code abilities for parking?
There may be, but we'd have to remove the planter and the trees that are in the planter. It wasn't, it wasn't really explored or, or looked into.
And the planter is, I mean, we have some standards for breaking up large parking lots. Is that planter a minimum requirement that couldn't be reviewed?
I'd like to first speak to the first question. I mean, there is one additional space proposed. We found space for one more.
We're short one, I'm looking for one additional from what's proposed.
And so like, my point is that we have absolutely explored where maybe another space could fit. And also looked back at previous approvals. How were those parking lots supposed to be configured? So I would argue that we have explored that. Or staff has given direction to, to explore that further. Again, because we're reacting here.
You're reacting, but you didn't try and draw it yourself.
Well.
It's not really your job, but I mean, you know how to.
Well, that's what I'm saying is like, I, I have done a lot of measuring and, and work on these plans to figure out for myself.
Yeah.
Is viable to give the applicant, which I view as honestly, a little bit above and beyond in some circumstances. But that's in the spirit of working towards solution, right? So I take no issue.
You don't see a spot available with the planter gone or anything?
I mean, I think the spot that's available is the one, the additional one the applicant's proposing. It's still one short, of course, but that one is where it can fit. Now, when you ask about removing the part, the planter, like, again, like, and this is kind of to Commissioner Cruz's question earlier about the size of the spaces, the maneuvering, all these things. Like, we are really trying to reasonably apply the standards based on the scope of the proposal. So we're focused on the use table, which includes the parking standards. So I think, yes, there are parking lot landscaping standards that have not been applied to this project because no development is proposed. So if that were to come, if that aspect of this proposal was to change, where now there's development proposed, standards apply to that development. So that may change the scope of the proposal. So it's kind of a difficult question to answer.
Great, thank you.
So just to clarify, are you saying that if, that if the planter were to be proposed demolished, for whatever reason, they figure out something, that would be development? And so then that would require a development proposal and tick off a bunch of other stuff?
Yeah, the definition of development includes grading. And, you know, like it has a definition that I think to tear something up and rebuild something else would meet that definition and therefore kind of usher in a suite of standards that apply to that type of development. So that's not the proposal in front of us. So that's not how the review has gone. But if the proposal changes, the review therefore changes.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other final questions?
Did you have?
Oh, yeah. Do the spaces that are on here currently shown, do they meet the dimensional standards for minimum size of parking spaces?
I think probably most of them do, but some of them may not. And again, like this proposal, really trying here to try to see the parts of the proposal that are consistent with the previous approval and try to kind of pull that apart. So it's kind of a difficult question to answer. Like, you know, is it legally non-conforming? Well, no, not exactly. Has it changed? Like the extent of the pavement? No, it has not. Certainly anytime something's restriped, you know, it could, there could be mistakes made where spots get drawn smaller than when, how they were when they were approved. So I, I believe that there's a few that maybe are a little shy of our requirements. I believe the maneuvering space meets standards. Generally, the parking lot functions in a way that is serviceable. So I think like, from a conditional use perspective of our impacts mitigated, like I don't think this is, you know, yeah. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Sure.
I don't know if this is for you, Kelly, or maybe Andor or Brian, but could you explain the procedure of the alternative motion? If we wanted to explore that?
It's, it's there for your consideration. If you are able to make findings for the criteria, for consistent findings for the criteria for approval, that's up to you all in your discussion. But if you do go that way, there are some conditions of approval that should be included. So we write that motion to, to help you if that's, you know, the way that you decide. Because those would be, you know, that would be, staff has our recommendation based on our analysis, but knowing, like, let's say all that aside, findings are made, those conditions would be necessary to support those findings that you'd be making. So you're welcome to explore that anytime, and it's just there for your consideration to help you.
Thank you.
Changing the subject from parking a little bit, can you tell us a little bit about the, the housing unit? The, what's being proposed as a workforce unit? Is that actually employee housing always? Or is that rented to whomever?
Right now, the general manager lives there.
General manager.
Employee housing, yeah.
And that's the intention, is to keep it for employees?
Based on its current allowable use, that's how it has to be, yeah. We, we tried to turn it into short-term rental, and it didn't qualify for that. And then after the code compliant complaint came through, that then we applied for 230 and 130 at the same time as recommended by staff to try to turn them both into hotel rooms. And then became an issue with the parking, and we revised that submittal.
Okay. And that unit, you said that it's, it was previously approved as an employee. What, what, something else similar?
Yeah, it was in the, in the file, MD 0010. It's noted as an employee unit. We had a different code at that time. You know, the, that code was replaced in 2001. So that's not a use in our current code. But that's how it was described at that time. But again, I think I mentioned this in my initial presentation. In order for this project, for this application to be eligible for the, the benefit of a workforce unit, they have to apply for a workforce unit. It could remain as, you know, like, if it was to stay an employee unit consistent with its old approval, like certainly, I, I, I don't think that would represent an issue or a problem. It would be kind of reverting to its previous approval. But it represents no advantage to the applicant in this circumstance. It is, I think it's about 1,300 square feet, I want to say. So it's, it's a little bit large, I think, on its own. I don't think that's staff's. On its own, like, I don't think we have an issue with an employee unit in this location and these circumstances, all these things. Something that was an employee unit that was allowed to be larger, maybe the same use standards weren't in place at that time, to now come and say, we'd like to be a workforce unit. I think that alone, again, staff supports workforce units, and we support workforce units downtown, and we support workforce units at this location. It's the parking that is kind of forcing our recommendation.
I have another question for Rebecca, actually. Say the applicant takes this to city council and gets denied, then what happens?
We would proceed with code enforcement action. So I think there are options are to bring the site into compliance one way or another. But we would.
Shut down a room or.
Yeah, we would.
DRT options, basically, fee and lieu, or close a room, or add a workforce unit, basically.
Yeah, so we have an open code enforcement case. We have, because the applicant, the property owner, was working with us in good faith, and we've been, they submitted an application to try to bring the site into compliance and have been working through the development review process. It's been a long process, but they have been working with us through that process. So we haven't taken any additional enforcement action. So if this particular proposal were to be denied, either the applicant could say, okay, I'll submit something different. We probably still wouldn't move forward to a court summons if, if they were working with us. But at some point, if we needed to, we would go to municipal court, and the court prosecutor would probably work pretty hard to get to a deal. And if not, you know, the judge would make a decision.
Thanks. Any other final questions? I guess tying into that. No, actually, I'm not going to ask that question. Never mind, thank you. Any, anybody else, though? Okay, I'll close our public portion, come to commissioners for discussion and emotion.
I mean, just from a discussion standpoint, I, I get the feeling, you know, A, there's not enough parking. Even if there were a workforce unit, it would just be another unit without parking. So there's a problem with parking. And apparently, part of that problem is associated with an illegal expansion of some sort, which I never understand how these things happen, but they happen. And I, I get the sense that, you know, everybody here, the staff, has worked hard to kind of redo the plan. And I don't think that's our responsibility. And so I, I support staff's recommendation on, on this issue for denial.
Jump in and support real quick and justify why I didn't have a question at the end, as, as I very much feel the way that you do. I had been leaning towards the idea of why didn't, why wasn't everybody looking at the unnecessary hardship component of how old the structure is? But understanding that the scope had been increased, which Kelly answered for us very well, helps kind of put that to bed, too, that there's not really my own finding, our own finding, that I think, I think that we could reach to. And so the question that I was almost going to ask was kind of, how did staff feel about the potential directions that we might take tonight? That could be tabling to try and get to something that's just supportable as a recommendation from Planning Commission versus just looking for a recommendation of no? Versus, are we even all feeling the opposite of me? Which would change all of that anyway. But that's what I was kind of wanting to get, get a sense of. And I, I didn't really find that to be an appropriate question to ask. But that's, that's kind of my concern, is how, how do we make a good decision tonight if everybody were to be feeling the way that you are, which I support? And, and how do we, is asking for tabling to, to try and produce one of these alternative compliance methods that Kelly also, I think, described really well at length? Or is it just our job to say, no, that this is what they want to do? And so here's my recommenda, you know, our voted recommendation?
I, you know, the reason I asked the question of both staff and the applicant is if you had more time, could you develop more alternatives? And I think everybody answered the way they felt they should answer. And so as far as I'm concerned, tabling disappeared as an option in my mind.
I would tend to agree. Other discussion, David, yeah?
Yeah, I would say, you know, when this case first came out, I went, you really, we're going to look at one parking, one parking space? And then you take a step back, continue my research, read through, read some of the items that were prepared of how this came to be. And, and then had the same thought in my head, what are the options? This is, this is here. What are the options? So it can continue and hopefully get through this code enforcement issue. And then the discussion tonight has really been fruitful. And I, I can't support it in the request that the applicant has. What I heard from staff is they worked with the applicant and presented many different options. The applicant did not want to move forward. The original plan was we want to have everything be hotel room and three parking spaces less than required. That doesn't work. Most people come here with a car. It may be different in the winter somewhat. But in the summer, people come with a car. I can't support this.
Other discussion? David?
I'll go. It's, it's kind of funny and sad that this is like the third inappropriate development that we've had to kind of react to after the fact. This one is completely different from the other two in that there are obvious options that they can have taken to avoid the parking, to mitigate the parking variance. And they have chosen not to take them. Not our job to try to re, you know, reconfigure the application while we're sitting here. Staff has told you, this has been going on for a year. You know, we have to trust that staff does due diligence with the applicant, and they go back and forth forever. That's why this is dated 2024. And the, and our PL number, it's been there. So we have to look at what's given to us. What the, this is what the applicant says, this is their line in the sand. All right, and that's it. They, they've had, they've been offered those choices. And because those choices are not being accepted by the applicant, I am in full support of staff's position. I am in full support of staff's position.
Yeah, I'm going to second Rich's comment on that. Pretty much nailed it. And I mean, our job again is to look at this and see if we think staff got it right. And it seems like staff has it right. A lot of options were presented. None of those options were moved forward with, and here we are.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm in the same, I, I arrived at the same place as everyone else. I can't support a development that doesn't provide adequate parking. However, that ended up happening, I can't support that. I am struggling with the fact that I think there is a way that the, the parking lot could be restriped. And I did scale it, and I know I probably shouldn't have, but I can't stop my brain from at least answering my question. And I do think it's possible. I don't know that it's possible without removing the planter, because I didn't explore that. So it's tough for me. It's a no, but it's tough for me that it's so close. And I think that if they had a little more time, I have a hard time believing that there, it couldn't happen. But I also respect that staff has been working with them for a very long time. And why do I think I have an idea that no one else has had? So just had to put all that out there. I, I do still think it's possible to add another parking spot, but that's not my job to design that in.
Any other discussion?
I agree with everyone else and I don't have anything to add.
We can keep going. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to, I assume we're approving staff's recommendation on PL 2024 0285 and denying the application.
In other words, you make a motion to recommend denial?
Yes. That was staff.
Making sure.
Yeah. They have recommendations, yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the table? Is there a second? A motion, a second? Any continued discussion?
I have continued discussion. Do we want to wait for the second or?
He did.
Oh, okay. Can, is it appropriate to still continue to discuss the, the workforce housing? Should, I mean, there's going to, this is going to come, something is going to happen with this development. They're not going to tear it down because we're, we're recommending denial. So I would like to have the conversation about whether we can approve or whether we would recommend that expanded workforce housing so that if they come back with something else, we've had that discussion and we don't surprise them with that discussion next time? Is that fair or not?
I, I would answer if you want to add into the minutes kind of how you feel about things. But in general, our job to design or present solutions for them, I think we need to be very.
I'm not, I'm not proposing anything else. I just want to discuss their proposal to, to, their proposal for a workforce housing unit that's for almost 400 square feet larger than the standard says it should be.
You support that?
And I don't know that I support that. I don't know that I support that. I mean, workforce housing is, we've had this discussion before, right? That workforce housing is supposed to be that size with the intention of being affordable. And a 1,400 square foot workforce housing unit, I don't know is affordable. If it was somehow deeded so that it was required to be an employee and that was together, I think I would have less of a problem with it. But there's, there's, there's nothing we can do to require that. I think I would rather see it come back as something else with like the deed restriction on it or something like that. Like, I could support that because the intention of workforce housing is to be for the workforce and some implied affordability, even though that's not in the code. So I don't, I don't, I would like to have the conversation because I don't think I support it, but I would love to hear other people's thoughts on that.
My, my feeling on the workforce part, this is, they're subtracting a space as opposed to, I think Kelly talked about it a little ways ago, a little ways ago. It should have one space, but that's not how this is mathematically working out. So even if they added another workforce unit, it wouldn't add any parking spaces. You'd still have the shortage and the same number of hotels.
Only if you turn one of the hotel spaces going away to become.
To go away.
Right. But if you were to say like, split that one in half.
Yeah, or something.
That wouldn't solve a problem, right? There's different distinctions there.
So I, you know, I, I think it's just, to me, it's semantics with this. In terms of your concern about it being too big, if, it should be deed restricted if it's going to be workforce housing, should have an AMI associated with it as far as I'm concerned. But I mean, that's beyond our conversation for this project.
I just want to clarify, why is this beyond our conversation? They proposed a workforce housing unit.
It's not beyond our conversation. It's a, it's a, it's a conditional use listed right at the top of the project. No, it's certainly worth our discussion.
I'm not proposing that they turn a different, another hotel room into a workforce. Yeah, just one.
You're right, you're right, precise. I, I would have said I probably would have been okay with a larger unit because it's an existing unit. They're not proposing to build one too big. And I probably would, if that was the only question of this application, I would probably would have approved it because it exists, whether you want to call it a hardship or whatever. And it's always been used as my understanding as an employee unit. And name change from employee unit to workforce housing, that's a different type of semantics than who was talking about. For me, I would have been okay with it. But you raise a good point. It's a good question. It's something we didn't discuss. But I'm kind of okay with it because it's already there.
And to clarify, and maybe I misunderstood Rich, but I think to build, just to help if I am, I think what's not on the table for us to talk about tonight is whether or not the definition of workforce housing is deed restricted properly and things like that. That's what we're not discussing. When you're talking about how like, there should be some kind of affordability aspect to it. No, we're not talking about that.
Yeah, no, we're not talking about that.
That's all he was saying. So I don't think that there's a.
I thought he thought that I was trying to propose a second workforce housing. You were talking about the park, yeah, anyway.
Any other discussion? Okay, great. Glad you brought that up. We have a motion to recommend denial. And a second, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then that passes unanimously. Thanks for your time tonight. Good luck. Thanks. That's it for agenda items this evening. Do we have a director's report?
I can share a few things with you all. Just because I kind of like to give you some updated stats every now and again. So in 2025, sort of year to date, we have had over 150 development review applications submitted. Kind of about the same at this point in the year that we saw last year. So nothing has slowed down this year. Aside from tonight, I didn't add your decisions tonight. But Planning Commission, you have made nine final decisions this year and 19 recommendations to city council. And we have approved, or decided, I should say, 60, about 65 applications administratively so far this year, also on par with the prior year. We have about, we have over 350 projects in the development review process. That's a big number. And so I just want to kind of clarify what that means. That's any application that's either just been submitted, going through DR, Development Review Team review, waiting on applicants to resubmit, scheduled for hearings if needed, hearings, decisions, and then if there are any open conditions that we are waiting for resolution on after the approval, those are considered still sort of in process to some degree. So those are all included in that 350-some odd number. So it's sort of a lot to juggle through over time. We have had over 170 code enforcement cases opened this year. So our code enforcement staff has been very busy. That includes 36 building code cases, 33 noxious weed cases, and about 60 short-term rental cases. So you've probably heard some of the public comment about those short-term rental cases. And currently, we have over 100 open cases pending resolution. So that's all code enforcement cases. As of the end of last month, we had about 2,254 licensed short-term rentals in the city. So that number kind of changes throughout the year, but it's a good number. We have done over 150 historic preservation reviews this year. And we are just about to finish up our historic preservation plan and design guidelines. So that's going to go, I think the final draft was presented to HPC at their last meeting or the meeting before. We will take it to, take the final, final draft to HPC for recommendation and then it will go to city council for formal adoption. We'll make sure you're all kind of looped in on that document so you can read it, have some familiarity with that. And I do expect that that plan will include some recommendations for some code amendments. So you're part of the code amendment process. You make recommendations to city council for code amendments. So some of that work will come through your meetings, work sessions probably as well. See, I also wanted to mention that the area plan coordinating committee met recently and reviewed a draft land use, future land use plan as part of the updated Steamboat Springs community plan. So we're working through some revisions on that, trying to get that to a final draft that will go out for public review. So again, we'll keep you guys in the loop, make sure you have a copy of that. But we will be presenting to city council next month, not for any sort of significant or in-depth discussion, but just sort of as like a presenting it publicly. It's out for public review, trying to just get people, make people aware of that. And then, of course, we'll work through your work session and public hearing processes to, to review that final draft once we get back some public feedback, see if we need to make any revisions and move into hopefully a formal adoption process this fall. Also, I think we have a final draft of our landscape code. It's gone through a number of revisions. We have a landscape architecture firm under contract to sort of do a test site, design a site using the code, see if it works, see what the end result looks like, see if we're missing something or if it doesn't make sense to them. So we're sort of challenging them to try to break that code. And then we're going to be going to some stakeholder, open houses or workshops to get some input from professionals in the field. And then, of course, we'll get back in front of you all, probably starting with a work session. And then hopefully work that through to adoption so we can get to the design standards, which I know our chair is eagerly awaiting. So that's our goal, to get through that. So I also anticipate, once we have that area community plan adopted, there's going to be some implementation efforts that we're going to want to jump on first thing next year. I mean, I could be very hopeful and say maybe this by the end of, you know, get going before the end of this year, but more realistic, I think we're looking at probably next year for some of the first implementation efforts. Yeah, that's all I think I have to share. I think most of you know council will be having a discussion on short-term rental prosecution on August 5th. So if you're interested in that, tune in. It should be first on the agenda. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Great, thank you very much.
Chair, can I ask two questions of the director?
Sure.
All right, just quick, two quick questions. One is, that's a lot of volume. How many full-time planners do you have on your team?
We have a staff of 15 in terms of development review planners. We have four?
If you count Bob.
If we count, Bob manages a staff of three. So there's four that work almost entirely on development review. And then, of course, we have our historic preservation planner as well, who is, who does, you know, some of the building permit reviews and historic preservation reviews as well.
And my understanding was council had asked if there's an option for fewer items to come to them for more decision authority for this body? Is that something that is up for a work session in the future for us?
My understanding is that city council has pushed that off a little bit for further discussion among themselves, if that's something that they want to potentially consider. And then I would say, my recommendation, if, if that comes up for future discussion with council, I would typically recommend that they provide some high-level input and then push it down to Planning Commission for consideration and a potential code amendment.
Thank you. We don't have any meeting minutes or old business tonight. So if anybody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we are adjourned at 6:35.